Okay, I would like to call this meeting to order, January thirteenth at nine o'clock. Oh, then I would like to have roll call.
Joe Rolls. John Wiener.
Here.
Jordan Mica.
Here.
Rick Corpala.
Here.
Pat Kitty.
Here. Okay, the next item, number two, we public hearing on amending the Ashen County private sewer system ordinance.
I make motion with one to public hearing.
I'll second.
That's gotta be a roll call.
Or, yeah.
Joe Rolls. John Wiener.
Here.
Rick Corpala.
Yep.
Jordan Mica.
Yeah.
Pat Kitty.
Yeah.
You don't have nobody, there's people on the line to speak.
Well, I'll do that after the, in case anybody called in. You can start with the callers, or even you want to start with callers?
Sure, um. Gary Bertake, do you wanna, did you wanna say anything?
Yeah, uh, just a word of warning for future meetings, uh, the committee members might want to realize that those microphones are hot when you're there early. So everything you said was heard, probably not too bad of an idea to be careful what you say on an open mic. But that being said, um, I've gotten a few calls and a big question, there's a couple of questions, one is, how many septic systems in the county are we talking about? Rough idea?
We can't answer during public comment.
Okay, then my public comment is, I had a mound system put in, in October of two thousand and eighteen. It cost me twenty-two thousand dollars, I paid nine hundred dollars in fees, three hundred and seventy-five to the county and five hundred and twenty-five to the state. And I, along with some other folks, yes, that's true, five hundred and twenty-five to the state, for the design and state fees, and three hundred and seventy-five bucks to the zoning department. I, along with some of the people I represent, have a question, when is enough enough?
Um, anybody else, I wouldn't, um, would like to speak?
How about Sarah?
Is there anybody else online?
Oh, she just, what's her name?
We did receive one email. Came from Jamie Weaver for town of Sandburn, uh, email says Heather Lewis, our chairman directed me to let you know that the town discussed the private sewage ordinance at our Monday meeting, and they are not in favor of it, if you have any questions to give them a call, the number's listed on the email here. That's the only thing we, that we received in opposition to this.
Is that the only other, uh, comment you got?
Yep.
Well, if there's no other comments, I make motion we go out of public hearing.
And that I can second. I can second that one.
Well, if somebody comes in later on, we can always listen to them, but we're gonna make our decision within five minutes from here. Did you second my motion?
Yeah.
So, gotta take a roll call again, could go out of.
Okay, call the order and roll call.
John Wiener.
Here.
Rick Corpala.
Yep.
George Mica.
Yes.
Pat Kitty.
Yes.
Joe Rolls is absent.
We don't need roll call to go out of call. Now you start the meeting.
Okay, number four would be approval of agenda.
Are you on three?
Oh, you're on three with the roll call and.
If you're, if, if, you gotta go, now we're going into a regular meeting, so you gotta call roll again, you gotta call meeting to order, and have roll call once again.
We'll have the quarter, call the order, and we have a roll call.
John Wiener.
Here.
Rick Corpala.
Here.
George Mica.
Here.
Pat Kitty.
Here.
I make motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
Sure.
We don't need roll call on that.
Okay. We'll go to, um, our, number five, approval of zoning and land committee meeting minutes, November sixteenth, twenty twenty. So I get approval on that.
I'll make a motion to approve, and I have a comment.
I'll second it.
Okay.
On the second page, very top line, the sentence, it has, "Our corpora two tax deed as mentioned." What words should we use to clarify that?
Could you repeat that, I'm sorry?
The, the first line on the second page, um, it said seconded by "our corpora two tax deed as mentioned."
That's how you said it, 'cause I talked to Jennifer about that.
Okay.
And I, if you want me to correct that, I sure can't.
Well, no, if that's what, if those were the actual words, then they need to stay, but I thought the word "take" should have been in there somewhere. But if those are actual words, then it has to stay.
Okay.
Okay, that sounds good, then we'll move on to number six, any public comments, three minutes per person.
We need to vote on the minutes. We didn't vote on accepting the minutes.
Oh.
Just gonna do it all a favor on the minutes.
So we go to number seven then?
No, number five, all in favor of.
Accepting.
Oh, all, all in favor of approval on, uh, zoning meeting minutes on November, November sixteenth. Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Now we can move to number six?
Yes.
Any public comments, three minutes per person? Any public comments? I guess not, so we'll move on to number seven. We'll go with the decision on proposal amendment of the private sewer system ordinance, proposed maintenance fee.
I will quickly clear up what Gary had said, he had said we paid three seventy-five to the state, or excuse me, three seventy-five to the county, five twenty-five to the state, the county fee is four fifty, and the state planner view of the fee is two fifty. The four fifty, you know, it ties into, you know, our inspections, our paperwork, getting everything in the system, the approvals, getting everything medled out, but that's all I have as far as Gary's comment.
Yeah, this is, this is Gary. Yeah, John?
Yep, go ahead.
Okay, yeah, yeah, I was billed Ashen County zoning permit, three hundred and seventy-five bucks, this was back in eighteen, and I was billed five hundred and twenty-five bucks for CFC's design and state fee. So that's nine hundred bucks. So, that, you know, that, that's what I paid. I'm sure others who have systems as big as, you know, and, once you get into a mound, you get into a different situation than a conventional system, but, those are fees you pay. So when the, when the time comes, the question I have, not only as a citizen, but as a county board member, because I've had calls from town of Peeksville, town of Agenda, is, how many septic systems are there in the county? What's the fee going to be used for? Those, those are some pretty simple questions.
Correct, so there's between, I don't have the numbers with me now, that's all things we discussed that earlier. Roughly thirty-five hundred systems in the county, give or take. The money gets used for the maintenance, the tracking. We get property owners that are calling, inquiring about, you know, their sanitary permits. Uh, we have buyers calling, inquiring, we spend a lot of time, um, between buyers, sellers, and real estate agents, and fulfilling their requests, pulling in old permits, there's a fair amount of expense that the county office bears, and the zoning department bears, um, fulfilling those requests, the tracking of it. It's required by the state, the tracking, the maintenance programs, things of both nature, so, this is basically gonna offset expenses we currently bear, um, but just put it more back onto the people that are using it per se, because the expense that we're bearing in the department is a result of those systems that are in their own.
Okay, that, that, thank you, Josh, that's a good explanation, because when people called, I had no idea. The, the only other concern, and this is for future use, if that notice for that hearing that we, you just got done having, was showing up in the daily press in little tiny print, that's the only notice that people had, other than the town boards who received the notice of your agenda. So, the lack of people calling, sending emails is quite obvious, if that, uh, this notice for that past hearing that just got done, was just a little ad in the paper, and, and I'm just saying that for future use, I know those things cost money, and we're trying to save money, but, one of the callers that I got actually reads all of those notices, probably one of very few, but, that's, that was my concern, and, and your explanation helps me, at least when they call again, or I call them back, so thank you.
As, as far as the font and the size of the ad that the daily press uses, that's up to them. They have a certain setup they use for legal notices, so that's kind of out of our control, I mean, we spend a lot of money even for that little bitty ad, because it's a legal notice, so if you wanted to take that legal notice, the size that it is, and make it bigger, instead of spending a thousand dollars, you're gonna spend several thousand dollars to make that bigger, and I know that their publication, uh, their subscribers has dropped substantially too, so.
Right, yeah, yeah, I, I understand, thank you very much.
Sure.
Any more comments?
I have some comments. John. So, if I go to page eighteen, um, in paragraph six there, it says, "The annual maintenance fee for each improved property," and I'm looking at the word "improved" there, and if I flip back to the definitions at the beginning of this document, on pages two to four, the word "improved" is not defined there, so if we're gonna charge improved properties, I think the definition should include the, the word "improved," what that means, so I looked that up last night in the statutes, and I think it's important to put it there, so we are clear in the statute, or the ordinance, who we're gonna charge, but also then who we're not gonna charge. A related thing is towards the end there, it says, "A late fee will also be assessed," and it doesn't explain the amount of the late fee, or how it will be assessed, et cetera. Um, I think that has to be clearly stated there, both for staff and for the public, and since this is going on the property taxes, we already have a mechanism for, um, paying taxes late. So I think we need to, to change that language at the end, so it's clear what late fee means, you know, partly to staff, and then I think staff has to determine if, uh, if a fee is paid late, how are you gonna handle that internally on where the money goes? So if it's eight bucks and it's paid late, um, does your department get the eight bucks? Um, are you gonna have staff actually on late taxes segregate out the eight bucks that wasn't paid, and then pay it later? You know, and, and if you're gonna attach part of the fee there, I think you have to have that mechanism determined too, in something simple, so it's easy for staff. But between the word "improved" and the issue with the late fee, I think this, to me personally, needs to be revised, so that's clear, and since it's going on the property taxes, it would seem like we have time to revise that language and consider this before we move forward. And then the other thing, it's, it speaks to part of what Gary said and some others here. I think this agenda bill, since you're choosing to implement an ordinance, I think it has to be clear on where this money goes, and Josh, you explained some of it. So one of my questions now would be, if it's a lot of buyers and sellers and realtors taking up your time, then could we implement a fee for those who make this records request, so they can pay for the service they're getting? It's public records, so they can get the information, but why not charge, you know, realtors and buyers and sellers? So if Gary isn't gonna sell his house for twenty years, why is he paying this fee, um, to cover the costs for other people? I would like to, to know that. Um, and I, I've mentioned before, I really think we need to have an understanding of staff time on this, that you can defend on assigning to the owners, and if it turns out to be realtors and buyers and sellers of other properties, and particular owner isn't, you know, doing, creating any activity, why are they paying for it? I, looking at this, I don't have information where I can defend supporting this, to charge other people those, um, fees. I will say though, that for those who are on a municipal system, such as in Ashland and Mellon, by state law, those municipalities can collect every cent they need for everything related to their water and sewer, so it seems reasonable that the county would not use tax dollars from everybody to support those on private systems. But at the same time, we shouldn't be charging more than we can defend, um, to charge people for those private systems. And right now, I don't have that information in front of me.
So, to comment on a couple of your things, a definition for "improved" could be added today, if this gets tabled and sent back to reword it, then it's gonna be a new publication, a new public hearing, to bring it back to vote on this to move forward, so if you're looking for a definition of "improved," we can certainly put that in today. As far as the other information, that isn't stuff that would typically go into an ordinance. Like, give you an example, so the eight dollar fee would be assessed across anybody that's gonna have a septic system, or an outhouse, or a porta potty. If I go out, if there's a complaint, for example, say on John Wiener's property, there's a fair amount of expense that we have to absorb to go out, do the inspection, issue a citation, follow through for compliance, work with the plumber, work with the property owner, eight dollars is far more, or should say far less than what that expense is gonna be, so if I get a complaint on John's, dollar for dollar, it's probably gonna cost upwards of between two and three hundred dollars minimum, for me to go out for an enforcement issue. When you look at overhead, you know, what's factored in, you know, for an hourly wage, with all the expenses, the vehicle, issuing the citation, working with the property owner, working with the plumber, working with the soil tester, so the eight dollars per property offsets the Pouts maintenance program, which covers pumping, inspections, maintenance, enforcement. We bear these now, but, you know, listening to the county board, the push has been that revenue needs to be generated from people utilizing the service. So if you live in town, why do you have to pay for me to go out to John's house for an enforcement issue? So this is just trying to balance the tables a little bit, offset those burdens that we're bearing currently. So it's more than just fulfilling, you know, point, it's more than just pulling a plan for a buyer or seller, those are time consuming, yes. But there's, it's a deeper process than just that also.
But you could charge buyers, sellers, and realtors a fee, that would lower what you would need on the maintenance. But the word "improved," um, do you know what the word "improved" means by state statute in this case?
It's defined in the county's zoning ordinance.
And can you tell me what that is? Can you tell me offhand what that means?
Give me a, give me a minute, I can, yeah.
'Cause we wanna capture everybody that has a septic system that's subject to the county ordinance, but we don't wanna capture anybody that's not subject to it.
Well, they, if they're on municipal sewer, they're already exempt, because they don't have to comply with the Pouts, you know, with the Pouts portion of this. We can specify if they have a sanitary system, or an outhouse, you know, an outhouse, uh, portable toilets are considered Pouts system, so, those could be, you know, if you want clarification, that could certainly be added, as opposed to just saying "improved."
So if someone has a machine shed on a farm, where there's no longer a house, um, that's used, or they have a garage, or other buildings, where the assessor taxes those as improvements, but there's no property where a septic system is required, they would be, they would have improvements to their property for which they're assessed. But we need to be careful in this language, that when we use that word "improvements," that we're not capturing anything that doesn't require a septic system. And that's a, that's the part that concerns me, because I think anybody that gets billed for this, that doesn't have a septic system, that should have one, I think you're gonna spend a lot of time talking to them.
I guess I just took for granted it was gonna be the systems that have Pouts, considering it's in the Pouts section of the ordinance, it's not under general zoning. If it was under general zoning, I can see that as a very valid concern. We do have a number of properties that have a pole shed, because people come up and they hunt, so they bring their camper up, that have outhouses, those would be subject to the eight dollar fee, if there's an outhouse or portable toilet there, because there's, you know, a tracking that goes along with that.
So somehow, when you implement this, you're gonna have to make sure that you capture the, the properties that should have a septic system, and not capture those, and if this definition isn't one that's written in a way that makes that clear, I have some concerns about how you're gonna implement this too. And I, would we really need to have another public notice if we were gonna work through some of these details? Or if there's any word change in here, then do you have to have a public hearing again?
If this is, if this is sent back and revised, then you are, yeah, you have to have a second public hearing, and republish it.
Well, just the part on the penalty, there's no clarity there at all.
Again, that can be addressed today, though.
Well, then we're changing it, so.
That's fine.
If we're changing the part of, so if we change anything, do we have to have another notice in the paper?
No, you can make changes today, because we've already had the public hearing, it was published, so anybody that is concerned, or has concerns, would already be involved with this, at this point, so, if you had a concern with, like, you're talking about the penalty, and you don't wanna see the penalty, then, the appropriate option would be then to make a motion to adopt this, but exclude the penalty portion. We can adopt this, including the language that, um, the improved property specifically refers to Pouts systems, and that would clear up any concerns that you would have with improved properties.
So any improved property where a Pouts system is required. And I said "is required," because there may be some that don't have it, but is required.
Right.
By county ordinance, or state statute.
Right, and then if you had a pole barn, you know, if you had forty acres out in the country, and you don't have any sort of Pouts system there, you don't pay the fee. Does that clear that up a little bit?
That would address that concern, so make sure we only capture those that we should.
Sure.
And, um, Dick Foo Paul, who's here, will remember when the city implemented a public fire protection fee, the city wasn't as careful as they could have been when they initiated that, saying, well, some people only pay a few bucks, no big deal. Turned into a major headache, and we had to go back and redo everything.
Sure.
So, I think, capture what we should, and nothing more, and make it so you can implement it. And then that fee, my personal feeling is, we should just strike the part at fee, or just simply say it's, it's subject to the same penalties as, as late property taxes, if it's going on the property taxes, why not just say it's subject to the same penalties as late property taxes?
Which would make that process easier, you know, if there's, if there's already an interest rate involved. As far as capturing the eight dollars, if, if the tax payment is late, you know, we know how many properties we have, you know, we're gonna know how many are set out, so obviously, we can deduct who's late, um, versus, you know, who we already have. It's internal accounting, so I, I don't see that as being an issue. There aren't that many delinquent resident, you know, structures, I should say, there's not that many delinquent properties that we deal with, that have those improvements, I mean, I could talk to Jenny and easily get that information, um, to move forward, you know, so we can capture who hasn't paid.
Chairman Wiener?
Go ahead.
Yep, this is Gary, just a quick question for you, Josh, you was talking about porta potty, so the farm that's abandoned, no current system, but they have a porta potty, 'cause they come up in hunting season, they're subject to the fee?
Yes, they're required to have a permit to that porta potty.
Okay, okay, so that's how you would identify those, you wouldn't have to go look for them, if they had a permit, or somebody turns them in?
Correct, I mean, there's obviously properties that are improved, that we don't have in the system yet, because the database is growing. I, we don't have a hundred percent of them in the system, like, we're well aware of that. Very close, but there are gonna be improved properties that perhaps get missed this first audit, we're finalizing our database.
Good, thank you.
Sure.
Any other comments? Any other comments?
We gotta, this doesn't have to go to the regular board, does it?
Yeah, it will.
Yep.
Every meeting, this will come on the regular board, okay? Well, I make a motion that we accept, uh, it as written. And then onto the board.
Make a motion to carry that?
Is there a second, let me keep going to discussion?
I guess I'll second.
You'll second it? Now time for discussion?
Now we can discuss the motion that's on the floor, I'm not gonna support the language, it's in there, but I would support a motion where the county modifies the language where "improved" is, so it captures only the property subject to the POTUS ordinance, and then at the end there, saying that the late fee would be assessed the same as the late charges for property taxes. So I would accept the motion with amendments, but, George, would you accept the friendly amendment?
Well, here's my take on it, I had a chance to think about it, and I was a little against that, uh, you know, the eight dollars isn't a big deal, you know, we turned down a real tax that would have given us three hundred thousand bucks, and for the life of it, I cannot understand why we did, because then everybody in the county helps with, with our shortfall. The penalty is gonna be a buck and a quarter, you know, at the candy bar today, you know, and, and we only have, you know, five percent, ten percent, that's all, people that are behind on their taxes. We've been, we're looking at trying to borrow a million bucks. We struggled, we didn't get it the first time, we might not this time. If we go into the Wisconsin fund, it's gonna be another whole position. We can't afford another position in our zoning administration, I call it. You wanna eight dollars per person, or you wanna come up with an eighty thousand dollar position? And we've been, we've been bucking that bullet for a long time, and there's, there's so many other things that need to be done, and so that, uh, for eight bucks, that's, that's pretty simple, that's pretty simple.
Well, my proposed amendment is simply that we change the language to make sure that we're only capturing those who, by county ordinance, are subject to the POTUS fee, 'cause right now, it says "improved," which may capture some people that aren't subject to the fee. So I just want him to be able to change that language, so we only capture those that should, and if we wanna remove the language on late fee period, because it goes on the property tax bill, that actually would be simpler for everybody, because it's already gonna be subject to those fees, 'cause it's on the property tax bill, so.
Well, and this would go on Dick and, and Clark's, so we're, we've had, uh, we've had a county board retreat for fifteen, twenty years, we haven't had one in the last couple of years. These are the things that need to be brought up on a retreat, we're not gonna discuss them totally, uh, within a court, within a meeting, but, but, these are the, how are you gonna, how are you gonna make up that extra money? Where are you gonna start cutting, uh, costs, are you gonna take something out of every department, you know? There's departments you can't, I mean, your justice department, your jail, your judge, you, 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 you can't, that's all state mandated, you're gonna find money for that. You're gonna take it away from, uh, some other program, well, if need be, that's the way. These are, these are simple things that we can do, not really burdening anybody.
I'm not speaking against charging eight dollars for those who are required by ordinance to have a POTUS system, I just wanna modify the language, so that we don't charge someone who is not required the eight dollar fee for a POTUS system, because a user fee should apply to those who are subject to it, who make use of it, as opposed to someone who isn't using that service, so, if someone has a property with improvements on it, but there's no requirement for a POTUS system, how would you explain to that constituent why you're charging them eight dollars for a POTUS fee? How would you justify that?
George basically is just clarifying what you said, he agrees with the motion, but he wants improved clarified, to say, you know, improved property is subject to the Pouts ordinance, and the penalty, because it isn't specified, the late fee will also be assessed, in the event the maintenance fee is not paid by the deadlines. So the late fee, he just wants to clarify that it's gonna be that, if there's a penalty, that's gonna just weird what the property tax late fee is. Yeah, so there's no question about, you know, what the late fee is, or what the improved property is, he supports what you're saying, he just wants it clarified, to take out any gray areas.
But there is no late fee published in here, so I would, I would assume it would be the eighteen percent that we, you know, which is, because there is no dollars, I know, if we said fifty dollars, well, I'd be totally against that. You know, you're gonna charge eight dollars, put it on a tax, and then you, if they're late fee, it's fifty, no, the late fee would be the eighteen percent that we charge normally.
Right, and.
Like I said, on the eight dollar bill, that's a buck thirty-nine or something, I picked it out, whatever it was.
Yeah, and that's why I think changing the language of the penalty would be the same penalty as, um, the late fee applying to property taxes. as the late fee applying to property taxes. That way you don't have to come back and update the ordinance, nor it puts staff in a defensible position to say, here's the penalty and the late fee. So it's simple, same as the property taxes. And nobody has to go back and change that unless they want to change it.
It just clears up any confusion, you know? That's like clarifying improved properties, you know? My understanding was because it was in the Pouch Organs. I can certainly appreciate the fact we're going to clarify it, just like we clarified the late fee, that it's going to be the same as property taxes. We're accomplishing the same thing, we're just clarifying the language. Twenty years, probably none of us are going to be here. So at that point, I mean, they could turn around and say, whoa, an improved property, you know, the neighbor down the road's got a dog house, that's an improvement because they're in a shoreline district, then it could be subject to this loosely if we don't clarify it. So I support the, you know, clarify the language if it's a concern.
Well, I don't want staff to have angry people coming in and saying, why am I getting charged for this? Because I don't have a subject system nor am I required to. Because that takes up a bunch of staff time, too. And then county board members will probably get some calls, too, and then guess what? We're probably going to come back and change it. I'd rather just make sure it's really clear and defensible to everybody and also for staff to be able to implement in a way where they're not having to lose their judgment. Because that way it's clear on what, how it applies, there's no ambiguity. And that doesn't require then people to take time to deal with it.
If I could, if I could put enough concession in here that people got ticked off about it, that they would run against me, I'd be doing it. I'd have been doing it for twenty years. I've been asking for the last ten years for somebody to run for, you know, some younger person. You know, if this would tick somebody off enough that they'd say, we're going to get rid of him, well, I tell you what, that's all mine, that's for me.
Can you have a vote on this, or?
Well, George has to decide if he'll accept the friendly amendment or not. Does it just clarify the two points of concern? Go ahead, George.
I mean, I appreciate your idea.
We'll call it, we're done discussing, aren't we?
Did you accept the friendly amendment or not?
Could you repeal that amendment? I'm sorry.
Do you want, go ahead, Al. Okay, so the amendment would state, the annual maintenance fee, each improved property subject to the Pouch Organs within Ashland County, except those served by municipal sewer, shall be assessed an annual fee of eight dollars. The annual fee shall be assessed and added to the property tax bill and array established by the zoning and land fee. The late fee will also be assessed in the event the maintenance fee is not paid by the deadlines established by the property tax payments and will mirror the same penalty. So we still have the same ordinance, we just clarified two points.
Unless you have another hearing and the county board passes a specific penalty, it would be the eighteen percent.
Correct. And that clarifies that that would be subject to the same penalties as late property taxes.
The advantage of adding the language that it's going to mirror the property taxes is that if the county ever changes the default rate on the property taxes, this will just change the same. If this was a different rate, it's going to be a lot harder because then you're going to have to calculate two sets of numbers as opposed to just letting them all meld together, you know, in the default state.
The other issue on implementing this is what if someone pays part of their taxes and not all of it? Are you going to pro-rate the eight dollar fee and pro-rate the penalty for this? That's a pile of staff time. So this makes it simple, it's all lumped together, same process, same penalties. I'm supportive of the eight dollars, George, just clarifying the language, make it easy for staff and constituents to.
You have to be talking to the boss over here, he, he could.
George, I got her.
You want that part of that, that eight dollars gets paid first, you know? You've got to remember, in our tax system, if I got four forties and I'm way behind in my taxes, I can pay for one forty and I can, you cannot take that money and apply it to any of the others, you know? So I just, you know, do a eight hundred dollars or eighty dollars, I guess it'd be more specific to me. But I told them it should have been fifteen dollars across the board, but no, it's that, wow. I would support that, even the fifteen dollars, everybody's paying two, three thousand dollars. Everybody's taxes are going up, you know? And I see things that we can avoid by doing this versus not doing it. And, you know, you want another person in zoning? We can't afford people in anything right now. You know, you want to change it three years down the road? You know, that's the nice part of government, that's why I guess the only nice part. You can bring it back on the floor, you can have another hearing, you can, you know, we can chew on this for a while if we want, we can always change it. Yeah, it's kind of hard to get something built, but we've done it and it works.
Well, I'm not speaking against the proposed ordinance, I'm only proposing clarified language that applies to those who are required to have a Pouch System. It makes it easy for staff to implement, that's all.
Well, I don't think we need to go to court counsel with it, but, I mean, the late fee would be the eighteen percent because that's basically just simple terms.
And that's the language that Josh, what Josh said, the language he said, that's what would apply.
Yeah.
So we're on the same page there. And the other part at the beginning, that when he added subject, improved property subject to Pouch Fees, then we're applying it only to those that are supposed to have one and not, say, a farm where there's a machine set and some other outbuildings and silos and grain bins that are improvements, but don't require a Pouch System.
Right, it eliminates people from taking this language out of context.
Well, and that's why we discuss things, you know, because you bring up a good point, you know? Would you compare it to fifty bucks? Because, no, 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 that's not going to fly, you know? In fact, I didn't want any on it before and then I was talking to George yesterday, you know? For the fuck? Somebody's got, we've got people with ten thousand, twelve thousand dollar bills. I mean, obviously, the eighteen hundred dollars a year, it doesn't mean a whole lot to them. Finding a way to pay it, you know? And we, I've been on here for twenty-eight years and I'll tell you what, we've gone through a lot of things that years ago, we just didn't agree with, you know? And so when we get people coming in and doing our tax, it's different than it was twenty years ago. It's just that different, you know? So I think it's a lot of improvements and I think these little things we can do. I'm appalled that we didn't go with that wheel tax, you know? You know?
I will say, from a zoning administrator perspective, I appreciate and applaud the amendment because it does, if there's any questions, it's been clarified, it can never be taken out of context. It's, again, black and white, so.
See, even that wheel tax, you know, I don't think we discussed it properly and I don't think it was brought to us as good as it could have. You know, there are people with three, four vehicles, there are people with more vehicles. One vehicle out of each household, I mean, we could have, we didn't do that. You know, there are things we just didn't do, you know? That maybe the next time around, that's what we need to do. Because if somebody's got ten vehicles, they're going to pay two fifty where I only got one, I'm going to pay twenty-five. Maybe every house, everyone that has registrations should only pay one. I mean, you're still going to come up with three hundred thousand bucks. I mean, it's pretty simple stuff, you know, to me.
Chair, I would ask that we either have the friendly amendment accepted and if it's not accepted, then I would like to make a motion to make an amendment and then have the committee vote on that amendment so that we can move on to the primary motion.
Can we make a motion to accept?
Well, hold on, what he's saying is, you'll have to ask George if he wants to accept that friendly amendment or not. That's where we start, right?
Do you want me to add my motion?
Correct.
That's okay.
And then the chairman, the chair made the second, you accept that also? The friendly amendment?
Will you second it with that?
Yes. Okay.
Now we got to vote if we're going to send it to the county board, because this ain't a done deal. The county boards are going to take a whack at it, you know? Do we want to take time? Heck, yeah. So, and you know, we'll take a vote now.
Can we take a vote to accept members? Let's have them here.
John Weiner?
Yes.
For four clock?
Yeah.
For D'Amico?
Yeah.
Kat Cuddy?
Yes.
Any more discussion?
Also, the motion would carry and it would be moved on to the full county board for next meeting.
Okay, the motion would be carried and then be moved on to the county board.
Item number eight, permits issued, governor ballots December, we brought in just over fifty-two hundred dollars. We pulled up in here in good form. We've got that here if you guys want to see it. And I do have something for other business today, I'm going to, yes, a little handout here. This comes back to some of the discussion that the county board has had with mandated services versus non-mandated services. And I'll make this quick. Virtually everything that we do in the zoning office is mandated, there's a list of it. There's an explanation kind of of what it is. And then I also listed some of the non-mandated services, some, one, a couple of non-mandated services. We do Pouch Review, we have agent status with the state. So when people have model systems or aggregate systems that they're putting in or larger systems, we have the ability to do that review and generates revenue for the county. It's something I took down a couple of years ago to generate revenue for the zoning department. As opposed to plumbers spending that two hundred and fifty dollars in the plans of the state, now they send it to us because we can do review work when we have time. Another service we offer is we do wetland delineation. Last year, I spent a few days on Madeline Island for the highway department, they were working on a project out there. It's not something the zoning department build the highway department for. I went out and did the wetland delineation work, worked with the Army Corps of Engineers. The project was on hold, one of the roads that we were redoing, it was holding everything up. It would have cost several thousand dollars to get a wetland delineator out and the project wouldn't have gotten done last year had I not gone off to do the work. We also do delineation work, if somebody's buying a property, they want to build a lot, we look at wetlands to make sure that we're going to be in compliance with what we're doing. So that's another service that we do offer. It's more of a convenience, it's been beneficial with the highway department. It's something, obviously, we may have to cut just because of time constraints. Then, general land use permits are not mandated. So if you are on the country, building a house, state does require a land use permit for that. You're finding a source of revenue, but if, you know, if cuts are made and there isn't enough money to do everything, then, you know, we'd have to look at actually not requiring permits. You know, for somebody to build a shed up, you know, that's not within shoreline, not within flood plain, if you're out of those two areas, the state doesn't require the county to capture that, to get building permits. The big issue is, tax assessors aren't going to catch that information right away. When we issue permits, they go online. Each tax assessor, obviously, they have their own township. The tax assessors know, they can go to the zoning page, pull up their township and see what permits have been issued. Those properties are captured immediately. The permits have been issued and they get them taxed faster. If the county were to turn to a model where we're only doing state mandated work in the zoning office, that would cease to happen. Then you're relying on tax assessors to go door to door to capture new construction. So that obviously would be a huge concern of mine. You know, there's a lot of talk with the April vote. There's talk if it doesn't pass, what's going to happen? If it does pass, everything's, you know, at least we're working in the right direction. I listed, I'd leave on there, too, if we were to have to cut staff in the office, I mean, most of our services are going to go out the door. As much time as I spend in the field in the summertime, our office would not be open. You would not physically be able to come to the county to talk to the zoning staff because I would be the only person there. There physically is not enough time in the year for that office to be one person. Right now, I would be likely working on September permits. If you were to apply for your house in September, you would now be getting your permits. To hang up with that would be, construction loans, a lot of times, are good for a hundred eighty days. So you're literally, people would be loser qualifications for construction loans. Contractors are going to have a harder time scheduling when they have no idea how long it's going to take to get permits. Those are a couple of real big issues. The requirement that Clark was forced with and faced with this last year for this budget cycle was to come back with basically a net zero on gains. There are certain expenditures that the county had to face, they had to accept because doing business costs money. Every department, I believe, for the most part, took a hit. You know, one of the areas that we were forced with, and this, this sounds minimal and it's frustrating, but it just goes to show the impact on a small department when budget cuts are forced. There literally is not enough money in my budget to keep the county, the zoning cell phone on. That cell phone is also used for collecting nine-one-one addresses. It's used in the field with people, you know, plumbers need to get ahold of me or property owners. That cell phone number is available to the general public, so when they have questions, they can be answered. Oftentimes, if we're out in the field for extended times, you know, my phone is forwarded. On weekends, it's forwarded, I take calls seventies a week from people because we're a small department. We don't have the ability to just work within the constraints of the normal nine-to-five, if you will. I don't even have enough money in my budget to go to Madeline Island to fulfill my state requirements for my Pouch Inspections. My travel budget was my ferry budget. I had five hundred dollars, we usually spend around three fifty to four hundred. It just depends on how many people apply for subject systems over there. It also depends on how many complaints we get over there. I have enough money for three visits this year. So what, I'm asking my committee, what would you like me to do as far as fulfilling requirements for the state mandated services that we already can't meet now because of the new budgets? Because the cuts were forced? It's kind of frustrating. You know, if you look at a five percent reduction in services and we stay staffed as we are to do the work, you know, we'll have no office supplies, we won't be able to amend any ordinances. We have an amendment coming up on our flood plain ordinance that's mandated by the DNR. If there's a new dam study done, we have to update within six months our flood plain ordinance. We physically wouldn't have the money to do things like that that are mandated.
So you're asking for approval?
I'm looking for, well, not approval, I mean, the budget's in place because of the requirements that were put on the administrator. It strapped a lot of departments, you know, I'm not the only department. And to me, this is a serious issue because, I mean, you can run status quo. The point of a budget is to stay within what you're given. It isn't to just keep doing business as usual and not stay within these constraints. If I have a hundred dollars to spend, I can't spend two hundred. You know, we have some areas in here where we're going to have to shave money from one thing to another. You know, maybe we, you know, shave office supplies to make more trips to Madeline Island. I mean, there's not extra money in these budgets. So I just, I guess I want to make, as county board members, make you aware of the fact that, you know, when you're looking at a five percent cut on a department, when there's mandated services, that doesn't always work. I mean, it's, we hate to say it's department-specific, a lot of these departments are not going to be able to do a five percent cut. And we, who's suggesting a five percent? We're just, we're looking at options for next year. If this, if the referendum doesn't pass, in order to keep things afloat, things need to change and things need to happen. Well, so, I mean, just looking at my 2021 budget, there's already constraints with it.
Chair, I'd like to ask the administrator, regarding ten o'clock, are we going to stick to ending by ten o'clock? Or are we going to be able to go beyond that?
I just texted the cooperators group for the vaccine group, I said, I'll start the meeting at ten fifteen.
Okay.
Yep, so we can go, so I basically just told them, we'll, so at ten after ten, we'll sign off. And I would recommend, since Brittany is at home, that after we get done with this discussion, we put her on next so that if we have to stop recording meeting, Jen can just, because you guys are here anyway. So that'll be my recommendation.
And I'm not really looking for input at this time, I just, I wanted to make you guys aware of how tight these budgets are already as we move forward, you know? If for some reason the referendum doesn't garner enough support to move forward, you know? Everybody's looking at ways to cut, we're looking at ways to generate revenue. Fortunately, you know, if the eight dollar fee moves forward, that's going to be, you know, not that, I guess to clarify things, too, that isn't going to be. that isn't going to give us twenty thousand dollars more in budgets. It's going to, our budget's going to stay like it is, but it's going to be, it's going to put what we do in the revenue that comes in more in alignment. So we're not relying on general tax dollars to do specific things. Does that make sense?
Well, thirty-five hundred systems you mentioned earlier, eight bucks a pop is twenty-eight thousand.
Right.
And so, you know, it would add that, but given what we've got on the agenda and stuff, you know, there'd be twenty-eight thousand there or more, but I think we're going to have to move on if we're going to get through this. I guess I'd leave it to the discretion of the chair if we move on or stay here.
Right, this was other business to let you guys know, you know, the, basically the financial crisis that the zoning department's in, for example. You guys serve on the committee. I felt it was important that you guys need to understand, we're already feeling the pinch and not sure how ends are going to meet to comply with state requirements moving forward.
But I'm, I'll make one comment and then I'd like to move on. If that eight-dollar fee is to cover the cost of the zoning department to do work, then my assumption has been that that money would go to the zoning department because its user fees are supposed to pay for actual costs of doing things. To me, that should stay in the department. If there's any thought of it going somewhere else, I think the board needs to know that before.
It, it will stay in the department. Our workload doesn't increase, you know, we're not all of a sudden magically going to be gaining more work. That's what we're doing.
Right.
So that money is actually going to be offsetting the expense we're currently bearing in our budget.
Right.
You, you would most likely see the accounting would be, you'd offset, you'd offset it by decrease in general levy supporting the department. So if you bring in twenty thousand dollars, you probably would decrease the general levy support for the department by the same amount of money.
Correct.
So, if that makes sense.
Or a portion thereof, depending what the board decides.
Precisely.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not my decision, the board determines the budget.
And we'll wait, let Jenny set the next meeting date. I don't have anything coming up that I need to set a meeting for, so if Jenny doesn't, then we'll, we'll come there. I'll yield to Brittany at this point.
Yeah.
Brittany, are you ready?
Yep. So what is my first item?
We're going to meet the regular board, we'll meet in March.
Okay, so it looks like number thirteen, John, is my first item, if you want to go to that.
John, item number thirteen.
Go ahead on number thirteen.
So discussion. I'll read it for you, Brittany, discussion or possible action on land information council resolution.
So I am looking for you guys to approve this to forward on to county board. The land information council has currently, I believe, twelve members and this would be bringing it down to eleven, just removing that IT rep from the resolution. No other changes were made that affects the, the core, therefore as parts of this resolution. We just removed a bunch of the whereas that were previously in that resolution.
I'll make a motion to approve. This is Pat.
Somebody else second? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? So, we go on to number fourteen, or we going back to?
Yep, number fourteen, GIS coordinator written report, Brittany.
Can you say that again, sorry?
I have number fourteen, GIS coordinator written report.
Yep, yep, sorry. So for this report, I didn't have a lot of project work. I kind of am wrapping up projects going on to maternity leave, starting Monday. So just kind of working on some general things, some stuff with the sheriff's department, kind of wrapping up some stuff with that FEMA grant so that they're all ready while I'm off for maternity leave. One of the big things we did was get that events map up. So I know, John, you're always asking about that one. I'm not sure if you've seen it, but it's, it's live. Do you guys have any questions on my report?
Any other question?
Need a motion on that?
I do not need a motion on that. And I just, I don't have, technically, I don't have another business section, but I would also like to just kind of echo what Joshua said about budgets. I'm a one-person department and a five percent cut would be roughly ten thousand dollars and I don't know what we could take away besides salary. And frankly, that's just myself. So, you know, this year, the Wisconsin land information officers did a salary survey and I'm already within the top ten lowest paid land information officers in the state. So if you took away from that salary, you would definitely harm the, any future hiring or retention rate. You know, nobody wants to get paid less, but when you're already in the top ten lowest paid, it's, you've got to be careful when you start to take away from salaries. I am in a unique position because ninety-five percent of my budget is strictly from land information grants. So technically, I'm not getting anything out of the general levy fund. The remaining five percent comes from registered deeds documents that are recorded. The state mandates that eight, eight dollars of every reported document goes to the land information office, which is the GIS department in our case. So I am in a unique position, but a five percent cut to my budget would be substantial since I'm a one-person department.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Can we go back to land extension law or?
Do you want me to stop recording?
No, I, I'm going to walk on. Hey, Jan, see the fast talk there, we can get out of there.
Okay, we go through number ten, public numbers. Number eleven would be decision, possible action, and property subject to tax deed.
Okay. Um, do you guys have copies of this list already? Okay, perfect. Not a whole lot changed on it, you know, we're just doing our usual, you know, updating payment amounts, monitoring that people on payment plans, like continuing to be on payment plans, sending letters if they find out payments, that sort of thing. We are working on those tax deeds that we discussed last time. So there's really not all that much different with this list this time around. There are, there is one property that I would like to go ahead and take a tax deed on and that is on page number three. It's the second from the bottom, Mary Anderson. We had discussed this a couple of months back. The, the town of Marango is interested in purchasing this property from the county to use as like a, a rest stop or a park of some sort. And we're now at the point where we can go ahead and propose on this property. So that would be, that would be my recommendation is that we go ahead and we take a tax deed on this Mary Anderson parcel. And then if the committee wishes, we can go ahead and sell it to the town of Marango.
Do we need approval on that one?
Well, I would need a motion to take the property.
I'll make a motion to take it. Here, we got a first and a second to approve the motion. Is that it?
You need to ask all those in favor.
John, we need to vote on the motion.
We need a vote on this right now?
Yeah, ask all in favor.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Okay, I got a question for Jennifer. Can the board sell this directly to the town of Marango or does this have to go out on, you know, for public auction?
Um, no, I, I believe, from my memory of the statutes, we are allowed to sell right to the town without going to land sale. So.
Yeah, we, as, as a county government, we can transfer ourselves to another government agency without opening up, but that does have ties in it. And the board might remember the discussion concerning the, the property in Mellon that we basically sold to them back in nineteen ninety-two and then they in turn put a ease, were selling an easement over for a pipeline. That issue did come up, so we did research that. It has to be still for a public good, they can't, you can't sell it for a dollar to, you know, to a municipality and then a municipality go around and sell it to a private entity and gain a profit off of it. It would go back and would receive back the original property.
So Jennifer, forgive, forgive me for forgetting, oh, you said county of Marango?
Yeah.
Is there any, you have any preference on whether the board would consider a motion now to let you begin the process of selling county of Marango or would you rather wait?
Um, I think it'd be fine if you guys wanted to do a motion to let me go ahead and do that. I probably wouldn't, you know, be able to do it like this week or something, but just to have the ability to go ahead when we're ready.
Okay, so I would make a motion that the county engage in discussions with the town of Marango to sell them the property once it's taken.
Can I get a second?
So then I do have a question, so, um, for the, for the back taxes here, you can see listed on the tax deed notice list, you know, it comes to, you know, a little under a hundred dollars for all the back taxes. Would we want to sell it to the town of Marango for just the back taxes owed? Or a little bit more would be my question.
My assumption would, we would ask them for not only the back taxes, but something at a reasonable fair market value rate.
Okay.
Because as a board, we're going to have to defend the sale. So I think it should be a reasonable fair market value plus the back taxes, which is still a pretty small amount total.
Okay.
So.
Okay. Um, okay, so, so just so I'm clear, you guys want me to just go, just talk to the town of Marango and get some ideas and then maybe come back next meeting with like a more solid number or something?
Yeah, in this case, find out if the, the assessed value of a thousand in the back taxes, if that's what you would think would be reasonable for selling it, if that's something they're agreeable to and, and we'll go from there.
Okay, sounds good.
But John, we had a motion in a second, so we need to vote on this.
Can we get a motion to accept it?
There's been a motion in a second, we haven't voted yet.
Get a vote on that?
All in favor?
You need to ask the, the committee to vote on this. We have the motion in second, we just need to ask all in favor and all opposed.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, all opposed? It's been accepted.
Okay. All right, so we have only got five minutes for the rest of this discussion, but, so I'll try to make this brief.
You, you can continue to mean, we'll just have to stop recording in five minutes.
Okay.
So don't, don't rush through what you're doing.
Okay.
We'll just stop recording so I can turn my.
Okay. So I, I was contacted by an individual named Duane Peterson this week and last week. He's basically interested in, he's, he's looking for a place to buy to, to open up a, like a fishing bait shop or something. And one of the properties he was looking into is the property across the street from the Glidden gas station, which would have been the old grocery store. We have not taken any action on this property. We haven't for several years. We've just let the taxes go delinquents and then every couple of years, once there's, you know, over thirteen or fifteen years of delinquent taxes, we have the board write those off. I think there was concern because of possible remediation to have to do on this property. But this individual is wondering if the county would be willing to basically go ahead and propose on that because he is interested in buying it from the county. I did tell him to get in contact with the landowner, but he's not having any luck with that. So I just wanted to bring it to the committee's attention, see if that, taking that property would be something we'd be interested in.
It would be interesting to sell on it, but I don't know, there's contamination and stuff. Who, who's, they're responsible for all the cleanup and where everything has to be done for that building?
Correct, correct.
So it's just up to the owner that buys it and we're clear of that?
Yes.
I would gladly be accepted to do that.
Okay. Okay.
Jennifer, for clarification on process then, so the county is interested in, there's interest in taking it, which I will support, but I want to ask the administrator in terms of processes. You got someone willing to, to buy it in the current condition, but we would, I assume, prefer not to take it unless we have a contract to sell it. So on your end as administrator, would you look at coming to a written contract with this individual that if the county takes this property, they then would acquire the property for whatever amount is agreed on? So that we don't end up holding the bag of the property that may have contaminated?
Not do a direct transfer to somebody, we have to open it up and put it on the land sale auction. So, and then our new process for the next land sale auction will be on the Wisconsin surplus site, which is a policy which we adopted earlier last fall. And so we can't, we can't take George's property and sell it to John because, you know, whatever. It has to be an open, transparent process. And so it will be put on the Wisconsin surplus site to the highest bidder, provided it meets our minimum, which you as a committee set.
But couldn't we have an agreement that if the county takes it, that this person would then purchase it? You know, so if there's someone that wants to pay more, fine, but at a bare minimum, they would be willing to pay an amount that would be agreed upon?
I don't believe so. It's, it's a, it's, it's equivalent, it's just a more modern version of this little bid process.
Okay.
You know, it's good to have a commitment, but it's not enforceable
Right.
until we basically, until we open up the bid or we close the auction and the highest bid wins. So Jen would basically work with this person and say, here is the auction site, here is the deadline, please bid on this by this date. If we have an interested person, we definitely would do that. The same thing with that gas station that you've been talking about for a year, which is if we, if we put that on the land sale auction, we'd make sure we reach out to those people and say, you know, here's this gas station and let's get the highest bid for it.
So Jennifer, how qualified is this potential buyer, do you think, in terms of interest, capacity to pay for it so that we're reasonably sure that this is a serious offer that would follow through if it's up for sale?
Right. Um, I, I can't really speak to their ability to pay, you know, I don't, I don't know what kind of money they have and stuff, but he, he seems fairly serious. He's called me probably five times in the last week to ask about this property and also the, the gas station property, this property he's more interested in because it fits his needs better. I also, I, he asked me to send him all the information I have on the DNR about remediation, so I went and did that. And even, you know, with looking at the price tags of remediation and remodeling this building, he still seems interested, so it's really hard to say.
What's a downside if the county takes it and then is unable to sell it? What's the risk that we're taking?
Um, the risk, I guess, would just be, you know, we would just have this property not on. The risk, I guess, would just be, you know, we would just have this property not on the tax bill. We're just holding on to it with the unknown of if we'll ever be able to sell it, I guess. I think that was the main concern of the committee in the past of why they haven't taken it.
Chairman Weiner? John?
Go ahead.
A question that, are we talking about the Little Brown Building, the old Borman Gas Station on the west side of the highway?
Yes.
Okay, the county has had that for years, and we've tried to give that away in the past, both when I was on zoning and, and ever since. We've tried to give it to the town. We've tried to give it to other people. The question for those people always seeking it, and I think it's being addressed now, is that's contaminated. We don't know how much contamination is in the ground there. I will recall that in Melon, which was a bigger location, the old Highway 77 by the nursing home in Melon, that was a $50,000 cleanup. But the DNR gave us a grant to help process that. This is a much smaller site, and hopefully, because it's been abandoned for years, maybe the new owner, if he's a prospective new owner, gets those figures, maybe it won't be as bad, and if he bears the cost, that would be fine. It would be nice to get that building off the tax deed or to someone that would either use it or tear it down.
Okay.
Thank you.
Gary, we're going to have to close the Zoom meeting, so I can get the Vaccinator Group together, so...
Sure, that's fine.
Would you be interested in calling into somebody's cellphone here to continue the discussion?
No, I think the committee can do their job really well, and thank, I thank everybody for their...
I apologize for the double booking. I, it was oversight on my part. So we're going to just close the Zoom meeting. You guys will continue your meeting. Your meeting will continue, because you're a core here, but we won't have that, so you can basically close the Zoom meeting and shut it down.